Well, let us start. We're a little bit late. Welcome to Coffee Talk. Today is November fourteenth. Open session being recorded forever and ever, your image and voice. For those new here to Coffee Talk and a couple of folks on the phone, these Coffee Talks run a little bit different than our normal Select Board meetings. My other colleagues aren't here. One's online, one's coming from a plane. But for the Coffee Talk, this is our opportunity to talk to you folks, for you to ask us questions. If my colleagues were sitting here beside me, we would not deliberate, we would not discuss, we would not vote. This truly is just an open forum coffee chat. Tonight, we want to focus on the articles for the town meeting that will happen in a few weeks on December ninth at seven? Seven or seven thirty?
We are doing it at six thirty P M.
Oh, six thirty. Six thirty P M on December ninth at the Memorial School. We'll go through these articles. So with that horrible introduction, we will start. There are copies over there if you would like them. They are also in the mail and winging your way to your mailbox. They were mailed out today.
Yes.
Yes, cool. So you will have them well in time for our meeting. So without further ado, let us hop into Article One, which talks about F Y twenty-five operating budget transfers.
All right. So what you have here is just a small warrant, twelve articles. The first one is one budget transfer. And this is one hundred and sixteen thousand from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund to police department wages. And this is to address the agreement that was agreed to between the Berlins Boylston Regional School Districts and the town at the June special town meeting. So basically, the way this is going to work is that funding goes to the police department in order to offset those additional funds that were funded out of free cash. And so therefore, a hundred and sixteen thousand in police wages that were raised through taxation will not be used and will flow to free cash, therefore offsetting the payment to the schools in free cash. Sounds a little bit confusing, but this is actually the way that the Department of Revenue has asked us to address this. So we are just making that adjustment so we can give the agreed upon funds to the schools. Any questions on that article? No, I'm trying to keep an eye on line two.
Oh, well, I'll keep turning around.
Perfect.
The second one is for the Public Safety Second Floor Renovation Project. As you know, both chiefs are here. Oh, here comes Roger. Okay, to follow along. All right. Both chiefs are here if you have any questions. But down the hall and over the main section of the building where police and fire sit, we are building out the bunkhouse upstairs. This will allow for better space. It will allow Eric to continue working towards accreditation for many of the requirements. It will also help with recruiting because unfortunately, when people come in and they go downstairs and they realize that it's really not that conducive, we've been losing recruits. So and thanks to Assabet Valley, they have pretty much come to our rescue on this and honestly will save us gigantic amount of money for them to do it. But we need to transfer some money around to do the renovations.
Yes, so this is the balance of funding. We started transferring funds with ARPA money for the design and a little bit of seed money to start on the project. And then at town meeting, we transferred the first hundred and seventy-five thousand from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund in May. And now we need to transfer the balance in order to pay for the project, which is four hundred and fifty-five thousand. That is estimated to be a seven hundred thousand dollar project in total, which consists of a fifteen percent fee to Assabet Valley Vocational Technical School for the construction work plus the cost of building materials. I'm pleased to report we're at about ninety-five percent completion right now on the design plans. And Assabet couldn't be more ready to get started. We also have some excitement from our legislators. Congresswoman Lori Trahan is very excited about this project and just the opportunity for the students at Assabet to work across multidisciplinary, you know, efforts where you have plumbing, electrical, construction, all working together. This is a project that will benefit them as well as save us about two thirds of the cost of what this project otherwise would have cost, which we would not have been able to do this project without Assabet. So it's really a win-win on both sides. So any questions there?
No, and then this one and the previous one, just want to let you know that FinCom has provided their recommendation four to nothing for that. Any questions for either chief that are here to talk about the bunkhouse and expectations? And if you do, you have to come up and speak into the mic because otherwise you can't be heard. All right.
Got nothing.
All right. Moving on, Article Three, talk about purchase of a police department cruiser. Eric is probably the best one to talk about unfortunately, the timing that it takes to get a cruiser in once it's ordered. So we're looking at moving some money around to help move that process along. Kristin?
Yep, so we have a backlog statewide, potentially further out than that of police cruisers. Chief can give you the specifics, but we are looking at the possibility of getting a cruiser, I believe, in May or August if we order it now.
August to September.
I'm sorry, August to September if we order it now. So typically, this is the cruiser as part of our replacement schedule that we do, that we would put on the May annual town meeting. But because of the lengthy delay and backlog, it would make sense for us to get in the queue now and put this article forward since we're having the fall town meeting and not put it on May town meeting instead.
So Eric, if we waited to buy one, how much would costs increase? Right now, you're looking at seventy-one. If we waited, how much would it go up-ish?
Anywhere between three and eight percent.
You're asking me to do math? So that's why we're trying to hop now and transfer the money around. Questions?
Just informational. So transferring the money now and then you put your order in? Gotcha.
Right, the.
A good paid thing we're doing here.
Well, it's also that the town's not allowed to even commit money unless it has the money already allocated. So it's not like as soon as we pass this, we're writing a check for.
No, no. But yeah.
FinCom has also approved this with a four to nothing vote. All right, nothing? All right, on to Article Four, revocation of dedication of revenue to opioid stabilization fund. So Kristin, I'm just gonna let you take that one.
This is really a housekeeping item. There are, as you've probably heard, a number of settlements going on nationwide. There were lawsuits against the pharmaceutical companies that made the opioid products for what they stated were deceitful advertising and marketing tactics. And so there are statewide settlements that are involved. The town is part of that and has been receiving funding as a result. We are at this point up to just under forty thousand dollars in funding that we have received that can go back into the community for very specific measures in order to address some of the supports and other programs that would help with the opioid crisis. However, when the settlements came forward, it came fast and furious and the state initially said, put the money into a stabilization fund. They have since come out with recent guidance that that money should be placed in what's known as a special revenue fund instead. So what this article seeks to do is to revoke the town meeting vote that was taken back in, I believe it was May first of two thousand and twenty-three. And then we would be able to put these funds into a special revenue fund at the recommendation of the Department of Revenue to be able to access those funds and start developing programming around the state regulations or guidance rather for what we can do.
Questions?
I have a question. Who would be responsible for those programs?
So those programs, we're looking at a couple of different options. Neshoba Boards of Health is doing some work right now. But we think based on sort of the unique nature of Berlin, we may like to do something in-house in conjunction with police, fire, Board of Local Board of Health and perhaps our C O A Director as they come on board. So it would be really nice for us to be able to design something that is very specific and helps with family supports and other education. So we're in the process of having those conversations right now.
Right, but to be clear, at this point, we don't have a plan on how it just gets spent. They just moved it from one fund to another.
That's correct.
Would town meetings still be necessary to spend the money out of this special revenue account?
No.
Okay. So it then falls to the Select Board to be able to spend those funds?
Correct, so we would develop a program and bring it to the Select Board.
About time thirty years.
All right. Article Five talks about amending the Recreation Revolving Fund bylaw. What this says, there's been multiple programs that the Recreation Committee has started to assist school and programs in the summer. So what this article will do will help to move some of those funds around to be able to pay for the counselors who actually run the programs.
So it actually will amend the bylaw to allow for the wages to be ineligible use of revolving funds. The bylaw very specifically states what you can take in funds for and what you can spend funds for. So in this instance, there's been new programming that started up through REC and unfortunately, wages has not been part of that eligible uses in the past. So it's really again a housekeeping item to add wages in there. Typically, you know, it makes sense to use the funds that you bring in from programs to pay for the counselors that actually run the programs. So this will allow us to do that.
Questions? All right. Moving along to Article Six, to amend the Community Preservation Act Committee bylaw. If you look down on Section One E, you'll notice that there is a strike through on a part of the bolded text and then the addition of a new housing trust. So Kristin?
This one's another housekeeping one, as I would say. The Housing Partnership is a now defunct town committee. And the town meeting voted to create a municipal affordable housing trust. So that would be the appropriate party to have serve in the stead of the Housing Partnership on the Community Preservation Act Committee. They do receive, the Housing Trust does receive direct funding from Community Preservation Act funds. So having them have a seat at the table would make logical sense.
All right. Article Seven, to amend the electronic voting bylaw. We've been using this since COVID, but unfortunately never had a bylaw to be able to put it in our town bylaws. I looked around online and just a little fun fact, as of two thousand and twenty-four, there are forty-nine towns that still count statewide ballots by hand. And the state of Massachusetts made up of three hundred and fifty-one or three hundred and fifty-one or three hundred and fifty-nine towns and cities in the Commonwealth. So we are definitely in with the new age of the electronic clicker.
Right, so this is for voting at town meeting?
That is correct.
And if people have been to town meeting know that at the start of every town meeting, Barry starts a motion to say, is it okay to do things by electronic clickers? And we do a hand vote for that. This will put in the bylaws that it's okay to do by electronic voting and will mean that at town meetings, we don't have to start off with that motion anymore. So it should speed up future town meetings for something that we're generally going to keep doing because the clickers, I think, have been an incredible time saver at town meeting.
They're entertaining too.
They are entertaining, easy to use. Just make sure you return them at the end. The meetings, all right.
And if you still have one of the ones that were from the last time meeting, please return them because I think there was.
What, a couple?
Seven that were missing?
We were. We did have to replace some for a community who loaned us some of their clickers. So if you happen to come across one at home somewhere under the washing machine maybe, please bring it back. It's not too late.
Yeah, check a spring jacket. It's probably in a pocket. All right, Article Eight, elected officials recall bylaw. This was something that the board had requested that Kristin gather some information, talk to legal about it. It's really not anything new. Again, when I did some research and it said that the right of the citizens to recall elected officials is believed to have been mentioned first in the Massachusetts Charter of sixteen ninety-one. So it's definitely been around for a while. It's one of those items that you don't want to use, but if you have to use, you need to make sure that it's in place.
It is, so I can walk you through it a little bit. We wanted to set the bar high enough that it couldn't be, I just don't like Joe, so I'd like to recall Joe. And five of my friends got together and decided to recall Joe. So basically, there's a multi-step process that involves the town clerk. And I did want to make it clear, this is just for the town of Berlin. This has nothing to do with schools or anything outside of the town. The Berlins Boylston Regional School District is not subject to the town of Berlin's bylaws. So I just, I did get a question on that, so I wanted to put that out there. This would start by fifty registered voters initiating a recall petition by filing it with the town clerk along with the name of the person they would like to recall. The town clerk then goes through and she certifies the names, very similar to when you're actually running for office. Certifies names and addresses. And then there is a completed recall petition that requires signature by at least ten percent of registered voters or seventy-five percent of the average number of voters in the town election for the previous three years, whichever is higher. So basically, ten percent of registered voters or seventy-five percent of your average voters in the last three elections is what that comes down to. So it sets a relatively high bar, particularly in Berlin where we have a high number of registered voters. The town clerk then would have to certify all of those signatures. There would be an election, I'm sorry, a recall election as well as putting forth a name of a person to fill that seat as well. So you're doing everything at once, which is, you know, really the way to do it if you can because that way you're already calling a special election. You don't want to have to call it twice. And then there is a provision in here too that states that it cannot be filed against someone within six months after taking office. And the person who is named in the recall election, sorry, the recall election can also not be removed until at least six months after that election. So that's just kind of a very basic overview. All of the text is in here. I don't know if anyone has specific questions on it.
Kristin, this was brought from another, from another town in some respects.
It was.
Borrowed heavily.
Yes, we beg borrow and steal in local government. It's really the opposite of what they teach you to do in school, which still kind of gets me all these years later. I actually worked on this bylaw in a former community, so I know it has passed muster. It also has been reviewed by town council. And we looked at a lot of different bylaws when we went through this process, so I feel comfortable with it.
For me proposing this now, it was, some people ask questions about things that I've read in the news about other towns about recalls. I thought it was important to put this forward when there's not sort of as far as I know, any grumblings of town of any elected official being because it's, then you're not writing it because you want to get rid of person X or person Y. You're writing because it makes good policy for the town. And the idea that, and the news is out there, there have been some elected officials have done some horrible things. And the idea in Berlin that if they chose not to resign, they could sit on their elected body for as long as their term was. And so it just seemed like, again, when it's not, when there's not someone currently, as far as I know, focused of this, it was a great time to sort of write it and get it on the books.
And it's not widely used. People are wondering, I looked up recall campaigns in Massachusetts. There was one currently in two thousand and twenty-four and Hopkinton. There are four, were four in two thousand and twenty-three, Brookfield, East Tantham, Dartmouth, Nantucket. Four in two thousand and twenty-two, three in twenty-one, four in twenty, three in nineteen. So it's not something that is widely used. But again, it's one of those things that if needed, we'd rather have than not have and try to scramble.
I'm just curious, is there a, do they have a rebuttal, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. Do they have a rebuttal part where the person that's asking to be, asking to recall, do they get to state their case? Or is it after the?
Right, the question, because otherwise it has to do with the person who's the subject has a chance for rebuttal. In some respects, there's an election, it becomes a rebuttal, is that so once it gets filed, there's a town election that that person and their supporters can, you know, make their arguments around town. The people who are trying to recall them can make their arguments around town. And then the majority rules at a town election.
Are there standards or parameters around the recall?
There are not standards. So the question was standards around the recall. We thought about it a little bit. It is, the funness about the English language is if you start saying this is appropriate for recall and this is not. You're getting an argument where the shoe's in and it's really someone wants to, you know, recall an official because they dyed their hair and people didn't like the color they dyed. You'd kind of hope that around town that they'd have a hard time finding fifty signatures to even get the petition started. And then another hard time trying to find three hundred people to sign it saying, you're right, I didn't like the color of that hair. Therefore, we should recall this elected official. And so it's trusting a little bit the populist to be able to go, this sounds like a real reason to recall someone, and it's not.
There are a few from Massachusetts that they talked about general reasons for recall. One is malfeasance. I had to look these up, the definitions up, which is wrongdoing by a public official. Misfeasance, which is the act of engaging in an action and failing to perform the duty correctly. And nonfeasance, which is failure to perform an act that is required by law. But again, nothing, not, you know, to Scott's point of, I don't like what you're wearing. It's, these are pretty general.
And even those first two, like, you know, you didn't take an action in the direction, it could be just someone voted a direction. You didn't want them to vote on something. And so I think just taking out the, it takes part of that debate away about whether or not it fits one of those three categories or not. And then again, trusting that the populace wouldn't do it for something silly.
We have a question. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I would specifically remember another town, and I don't remember which one it was. I had somebody who was committing one of those mal.
Bad things.
Bad things, malfeasance or whatever, and they, they didn't have a mechanism to get rid of them. And they were really stuck and I can't remember.
Right.
It was not good.
Yeah.
For years, it was not a good scene.
Right, and several of these actually didn't, failed because the process wasn't followed. They didn't get the number of votes that they needed. They didn't get it in the time that they needed. So that's why it's just not something as get out. There's an entire, right, there's an entire process.
Hey, Chris is trying to ask a question on.
We have a question from the audience?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Can't hear you for some reason.
Chris, are you on mute?
No, she doesn't look like she is.
We need a bingo card. Mute.
There's Chris. I think this might be a.
Can you hear me now?
Nope.
We can even see you now, Chris, but we can't hear you, yeah?
Lost you that time too. I think she just waved. All right.
Chris, can you try to talk again to see if Roger was able to turn you up?
Well, hang on a minute.
No, we can't hear you. Can read your lips, but can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
I don't know if it's something you can drop in chat.
Do we have the chat on?
Do we have chat on? We may not. I don't know.
Look.
Usually.
It doesn't have your microphone on.
Oh, oh, does it? Okay, sorry. No, it says.
It looks like it's slashed, doesn't it?
That's the microphone on her laptop. Because of her laptop has the mic on, we get feedback to.
Can she type it in the chat?
We, because of some state laws around open meeting and stuff, you can't have chat enabled because it allows, I don't, I can't remember the legal stuff. I just know we had to have chat enabled during.
To read her text I just sent her.
Well, if you send it to me, I can read it.
Oh, this does this. It's kind of like the shrinking head.
Yeah, it's a screenshot of a screenshot of a screenshot. Yeah, Chris, if you get it over to Kristin, she can read it to us.
Ask Peg to read her text. Oh, it came to you.
Oh. Well, I could hear my, I could hear my phone going off, but I wasn't going to. Well, because you're not supposed to use your phone during a public meeting, so even though it goes off, I ignore it.
Yeah.
She said I had asked to have this on, oh. Oh, all right, well, she said she had asked to have this on an agenda before town meeting to discuss whether we wanted to go forward with it, but.
But.
I mean, it's.
The board did sign the warrant at their last meeting though. So there wasn't an opportunity to have another.
Discussion.
Right.
We have one more board meeting before town meeting.
Sure, I mean, we can, it can always be further discussed. And there is the option of passing over an article if the board so chooses. So we do have a meeting on December second.
Right. All right, now I'll make a note to edit.
And Chris is sort of, if I remember the order of things, is that this ended up being discussed and added to a meeting that Chris couldn't make.
Correct.
And so she didn't get a chance to have as much input as she probably would like to have had in that.
Okay, all right.
So Peg, you're adding, you'll add that to the agenda for the second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's a hand in the, was it?
Oh, another one?
No, no. It's that direction.
Oh, in the room.
So I just want to confirm, there is no current mechanism for recalling a public?
Correct, in Berlin, there is no current mechanism. And so it's like, you know, I left here and cleaned out the treasurer's office with all the money. I'd be arrested and go to jail, but I could still be a Select Board member until I chose to, personally chose to resign. And so that would just be odd if one of your Select Board members was, you know, sitting in a jail cell intending by Zoom for a period of time. To be clear, I am planning on not planning on doing anything like that. But there is no current mechanism at all.
Does this cover that in town?
Elected.
It'd be all town elect, so Select Board, Planning Board, Town Clerk, Board of Health, assessors, Cemetery Commission, Town Moderator, trustee of trusts, because that's elected, I think, right now. Library Board, yep. Basically, all town of Berlin elected officials.
That would be on your annual town meeting.
The school board is its own independent government body. And because it's its own government body, they have their own bylaws.
So they would need to be a Berlin one, a school one, and I don't know if Boylston has one.
So but there is, would not cover the school district either.
Right.
And my last thing is just so if we did, this does pass and does go through, that there's just, because that's a good question. Lisa just brought up, how would people even know that information, like who is elected without wanting to have to kind of sort through? So that that information is available to people.
Is it in the town? I want to say it's in the town report somewhere.
Also on the annual town election, that information does go into the town report every year as well. And then the clerk posts that on the website.
There are a lot of volunteer positions in town that are also in that report that wouldn't be covered by this because they're just appointed at our pleasure or the pleasure of another body.
This would be people that were actually elected at your annual town election.
I'll look in the town report. I want to say that there's something in there.
I think that one.
And the town clerk has it.
Yeah, and once it passes, assuming it passes, let's assume it passes. When we do a sort of a PR thing about it, we could give the list of the people that it impacts, yeah.
Yeah, because there is a definite list of who's elected and who's appointed. And I know it exists somewhere and I've seen it, but I couldn't tell you where I've seen it. But I've got that one. We'll follow up with that. All right. All right, good behind us. All right, moving on. Article Nine, to accept Mass General Law Chapter Forty-four on the prudent investment rule.
Okay, so prudent investing basically allows the town to diversify its investments similar to what other banks and entities are allowed to do. There is a very short list right now of investment opportunities that municipalities are allowed to invest in. It's called the Mass Legal List. It's infrequently updated and as we know, markets shift and change all. Um, it's infrequently updated, and as we know, markets shift and change all of the time. Um, so this would actually allow the town to use an investor to. Look at either mutual funds, stocks, bonds, alternative investments. And make the decision as to what level of risk is appropriate for the town. Uh, there still is a limit on obviously the types of funds that can be addressed. And the select board would write a policy as well if this were to be passed at town meeting. Um, but this would allow us basically to potentially bring in more revenue and interest on our investments. Which, as we know, money is short. We'd like to bring in more wherever we can while managing the risk. So there are specific companies out there that this is what they do. One of them is Bartholomew. They're used by. Well over two hundred municipalities in the state to manage investment funds for cities and towns. And um, I can tell you at this time, there are at least seventy-five or eighty cities and towns. That have adopted prudent, and there are many more going to town meeting this year with the prudent um, investment request from town meeting.
And then, I know you said it, but I want to clear again, this allows the select board to change the policy. But this, just by passing the town bylaw, does not automatically allow us to invest in anything different. It would still have to. We'd still work with you and the treasurer and the and the collector to figure out what a good policy would be that balances risk and return. Cause there is added risk to some of these, the the risk is low, but not zero.
Correct, so the town does have an investment policy that we would modify um, in in accordance with the recommendations. You know, and we'd work with obviously the select board, like you said, treasurer, investor.
Right.
You know, people that do this every single day.
No.
No, I.
Will then come up with a strategy and a and a list of protocols.
And and even the prudent investing law of the state is still not, even if we adopt this and the select board follows it to as far as it could go. It is still a fairly conservative investment policy, that there are not, you know, some, there are not wild things out there, but it just right now, the. Basically, you know, it's a lot of government bonds, we can do it and things that like have zero risk, and we'll be able to go. Right, it it guy, we're not, we're not buying uh, Franklin Hummels and and.
Beanie Babies.
I have several of those in my closet, you know, just in case. If I have the one, then I'm going to be very rich per Facebook.
Right. Uh, and so it would allow us to figure out where that line is, but the line is like sort of zero risk right now, and do we move it to ultra-low risk? Uh, which gives a few more things, you know, the potential you could invest like in bonds of Fortune five hundred companies. You know, and 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 things like that that are are not zero, but the odds that some of those companies are just going to disappear tomorrow is is. Very, very, very unlikely.
Cool. Moving on.
I'm sorry, uh.
Oh, sorry.
The amount of money, I mean, the the town is not rolling at tons, but the amount of money we have sitting around that could be invested is still a couple million dollars.
It's several million, because, right, we have stabilization funds, we um, have trust funds. There's certainly some funding that this would impact, and that adds up quickly.
Right, and so even if we end up with like, you know, one tenth of one percent more, that is money. And we have a lot of small programs in this town that an extra five or ten thousand dollars to that program makes a big difference in what can happen. Right, specifically, right, yeah, the the cemetery commission that has trust funds that they use to maintain the cemetery. So if we can invest a little bit wider, might bring in a little bit more money that helps out the cemetery, yes.
Mm-hmm.
In a safe manner.
In a safe manner, right, right, yeah.
Absolutely, that's the key.
Alright. Article ten, uh, repurpose funding for the old fire station. Uh, roof replacement, a little back history on that, about a year or so ago, maybe a wee bit more. We had an independent third-party uh, company come in and evaluate all the town buildings and tell us. What condition they were in and how much money it would cost and what was wrong to get these buildings up to speed. Uh, some of the, these reports are available online. Uh, if you go to Town of Berlin, they are all out there for all our buildings. But a little bit of background on the old fire station. It sits on point three six acres of land, so that's not a whole lot. It was built in sixty-seven, so it's way over fifty. Minimal updating has been done. Masonry walls, concrete foundation have severe cracking. Uh, it is recommended that a professional architect is needed. Uh, the infrastructure is aged and degraded, uh, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, fire alarms need replacement. The lighting is old, it's obsolete, T twelve fluorescent bulb, some of it's not functional. We don't have any fire suppression in it. Uh, parking lot needs quite a bit of help. And if you were looking for costs to do fixes anywhere between our current timeframe and ten-year timeframe. You are looking at one point eight million dollars. So, uh, we are looking to potentially move some money that the town voted to fix. The roof on a building that Capitol and the select board have decided it is really of. Minimal value to the town.
So, yeah, at at a town meeting prior to having the facility study done, we we approved some money to replace the roof. Um, before we got to it, we started doing the facility study and decided that it probably wasn't worth spending too much money on a building. Uh, that we weren't sure what it's at. After had the facility study done, uh, the 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 fire building there and the rescue building.
Correct.
Are are buildings that we don't think have a a long-term use for the town. Um, especially when you start looking at like, even if we had one point eight million dollars to fix it, we probably could do better things in this town with for one point eight million dollars. Um, and so it's.
Only one building.
Right, and so uh, it's taking the money that we are set aside in some respects to fix the roof and instead use that to to remove the buildings. Which then also removes the liability of trying to have to both fix the buildings, but falling down buildings have liability of their own. And and vacant buildings have a chance, have a habit of uh, attracting not the greatest activities. Hopefully, ones close to the fire station and police station don't attract too much bad activity, but still, uh, there's risk there. And so, uh, I think this is a prudent, both saves long-term dollars, saves some short-term dollars, uh, reuses money we've already set aside. Um, it was just, I think, a win all the way around.
Potentially, that area could also be used as another access for fire and highway, uh, fire and police to get out onto sixty-two. That will be a far longer project, because now you're going to start dealing with the state on getting out and getting lights. Um, so that's way, way down the road. So right now, we just need to look at those two buildings and um. Coming down and when coming down.
So one is the old fire station, what's the other building?
The rescue building. The old Rudolph building.
Yeah, yeah. The two buildings, they're right next to each other on West Street.
Yes, and those, and honestly, those two buildings, it's not even acre of land. It's like point seven eight acres, and it's on a really bad road. So it's not like you could potentially turn that into something, because then there's a safety issue of trying to. Whiz out and whiz in from it.
Yeah, if someone wanted to turn those into retail, the the amount of problems cars getting in and out would have.
And there's no parking.
And there's no parking, and and so it didn't, we just couldn't find a a use for town stuff. There's not a use on a commercial market.
Right.
Um.
And even for storage, there's too much money that would need to be involved to get those buildings up. When, uh, as Scott was saying, that money could be used for other things in town. How'd we do on Article ten? Did we pretty much kill it for you?
Nice, I got nothing else to say.
Well, we have a hand up.
Oh, I'll have to see if we can get the person to.
That's Chris.
That's Chris again, sure. She had it down for a bit, so this is up again.
Yes, I'm testing it out.
Nope.
Nope.
No.
Well, I'm told, I'm told through text that I am.
Not on mute. Your camera is working.
And we turned the vo- I saw.
Camera is up on the TV.
Is it your, is it one of those computer volumes that need to go up?
Those have to be muted. Usually that would have to go up to hear it in the room, because that comes through the speaker.
Right, comes through the speaker, right, and he says it's up.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, here it comes.
I can hear it on my computer.
Good.
Do you want to translate?
She apparently can be heard in the the AV room next door, but not into here, which means these speakers might not be on.
Working or something, right.
Yeah, but we, oh.
No, because.
I know, Beth.
There's something not connected.
Yeah.
In the, in the proper way. Chris, if you want to send in a message, uh, again, I will read it. That's the best I've got, unfortunately.
Hmm, alright. No, it doesn't look like she's typing. Okay, alright, um, well, if it comes in, we'll, we'll back up. Alright, uh, Article eleven, uh, talks about the fifth modification of the River Bridge Development Agreement.
Yes, so this, when we went to close on the property at River Bridge. There, we knew there was a conservation restriction on the property. Unfortunately, we've run up against a rather onerous process known as Article ninety-seven. Which if you'd like to fall asleep at night, go read Article ninety-seven of the state uh, code. This is a process whereby anytime you do a land transfer of a property that has a conservation restriction. It has to go through a very lengthy process, which requires town meeting approval, special state legislation, the state EEA approval. And the idea is to preserve conservation land. That once land is in conservation, you don't want land to be taken out of conservation. So, and unfortunately, when the town acquires a piece of property that has a CR or a conservation restriction on it. It extinguishes a CR. So welcome to fund Massachusetts state laws. Things that don't make sense, but unfortunately, that is the law. So what we have to do is transfer that conservation restriction to a third party, which we've spoken with the Conservation Commission about. That would be Sudbury Valley Trustees. And that actual transfer of the CR is what triggers this whole lengthy Article ninety-seven process. That can take anywhere from one to two years. So this is state bureaucracy and legislation, unfortunately, at its finest. And so as a result, something I certainly did not want to do, but we do have to extend. The um, deadline for the purchase of the property in the River Bridge Agreement, which requires us to do. Hopefully, one last modification to the agreement. Um, the other piece that um, town council discovered when working on the land purchase is that. There are wells on the property the town was hoping to be able to assist adjacent property owners with. We've had several property owners come forward with interest in those wells. And being able to sell either the wells or the water rights is one way for us to recoup some funding. Um, the way the CR was written, it was written so that the owner of the property was the only party that was allowed to use that water. So as part of all of this, we need to do a modification to the CR, which very thankfully, the Conservation Commission did vote unanimously. To approve, so now we need town meeting approval as part of it. Um, I I know that's kind of a lot, that's sort of the Cliff Notes version of it, but if anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer them. Yeah, that's pretty much how I feel.
So we'll see y'all back here in a year to talk about this again. But unfortunately, it's just a long.
Yeah.
It's a long process.
Although this requires another vote, and we weren't planning on another vote. Everyone is who's involved in this is working hard to go the direction. There's no change in intent by anybody. There's no uh, new monies going anywhere. It is just uh, taking much longer because of that it requires a couple of of votes.
And they've tightened Article ninety-seven in the past couple of years, so that doesn't really help us either. That's really part of the reason why, you know, when this property was actually added to the third modification. The regulations for Article ninety-seven were not as onerous um, as they are now. So there wasn't, wouldn't have been as much of a concern to research that process at that time. But now it's changed.
And then.
Yeah, and keeping just to to go back, um, so Chris had texted and said. Uh, that everyone on YouTube can hear me, so I showed Scott and.
Right, and I related it to her. And so apparently, those of us in the room are the only people who can't hear Chris. People on YouTube can hear Chris, Roger can hear her in the room next door.
Sorry.
We just can't hear her in here to actually participate it, so uh. Uh, we'll, we'll probably try to resolve that after the meeting.
We will, I will make sure to, to. Our cable folks.
Alright, and our last item, our last article uh, tonight that we'll talk about is to transfer. For while, transfer funding from affordable housing donation accounts. To municipal affordable housing trust.
Okay, so there are two accounts um, that we have right now. Where affordable housing funding is resting, if you will. So the first is money that came from penalties that developers paid the town for not developing affordable housing units. As required under the town's zoning bylaws. And the second comes from the Highland Commons Development Agreement, which uh, required them through the agreement. To put a certain amount of funding aside for affordable housing. So now that the town has a municipal affordable housing trust that has all of the rights, privileges and responsibilities. To uh, develop affordable housing, we can uh, give the authority um, to them to oversee and expend these funds. It is just over half a million dollars, and hopefully we can do some good with it. So that is um, this article. If anyone has any questions. And this is just a transfer of funds at this time. There's not a specific um, property purchase right now. Um, they have been looking at some properties. This would require additional town meeting votes. Um, in order to transfer town-owned properties to the housing trust, so that will likely be coming forward at a future town meeting.
Transfer town-owned property.
Right.
To the trust, they are their own entity.
And those funds can't be used for other, I know you guys transfer funds all the time to make the town work. Those funds can't be transferred to any other entities, only for the housing trust.
So they have to be used for this specific purpose, and if this article passes at town meeting. They would be, they would fall under the jurisdiction of just the housing trust. Yes, because right now, we don't really have a mechanism to use them. Um, the planning board has had um, has used a little bit of the funds for our housing production plan, which is part of the town's master plan. As well as we have an affordable housing, uh, or we have a housing consultant through Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. But they're not the entity that would be working to develop the affordable housing, so this isn't a resource they can really use. Oh, okay.
Third time's a charm.
Third time's a charm.
I don't know, is it?
Nope. Third time is not a charm.
Cause we have to have that one muted.
Yes. Yeah, Brittany thought it was something to, it's got to be something to use fingers in the line.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that concludes our.
Yep.
Discussion of the town warrant. Again, you'll be getting all these lovely pieces of information. Whizzing through your mailbox uh, over the next couple of days and.
I realize they actually went out yesterday.
Did they? So they'll show up maybe tomorrow. Um, so remember, December ninth. Be there for our memorial school, six thirty for us elder folks. Um, well, you know, hey, it's a Monday night.
But six thirty is still after the sun has gone down.
That is correct, that is correct. Unfortunately, I stuck an earwig in Scott's uh, head the other day when I started singing Hello Darkness My Little Friend. It's dark at five o'clock again, so uh, I won't do that again for him. But uh, are there any other, you know, you gotta have some some levity at the table. Questions, comments?
We look up there, but if someone had asked.
Have it just. Have someone translate. And what Scott and I are doing is just, we have to formally sign these so that they can go to constables.
I could have swore I'd signed them a couple of times already.
We did, and you voted to sign them. The, remember the dollar amount went down on the last page, so we wanted to have an accurate.
Yes, Miss D.
Hey, maybe Chris can, Chris can say goodbye to it.
Motion to adjourn.
Nope. Nope. Alright.
Chris can hang around for a little bit after the meeting is done, but uh, but we thank everyone for for coming. Um, and uh.
Yes, our next select board meeting is the second. There really wasn't a lot on the agenda for the eighteenth, so, but if you have something, email us. And uh, we'll have a chat. Alright, TTFN.
Should do a motion to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I motion, we adjourn.
And I second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Chris, are you in favor of adjourning even though we can't hear you?
She'd be a minority if she said no.